Okay. 6:30. I'd like to call this Board of Selectment meeting October 16th to order, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the pursuit of liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we get started, you know, I don't want to make this into a political thing or anything. However, with all the events that have been going on in the world today, whatever, I just think that perhaps, maybe we take a moment of silence and try to, you know, pray for some peace on earth here, particularly what's going on in the Middle East and overseas and so on, and here at home. So if we don't mind, we can just take a moment of silence for that, please. Thank you. Okay. So, welcome, everyone. The members of the board here have had an opportunity to review the payroll and manifests. And if there's so, are there any questions, comments, or anything?
No.
Matt? No?
No, I had made a few questions that I asked Betsy, which was just from my own office, but the accounts payable is good.
Great.
All set?
I heard one over with Betsy today, so.
Awesome. Great, great. All right. So who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable for 10/16/2023 and the payroll for 10/17/2023.
I'll second.
A motion made by Matt Sherland, seconded by John Moran. Roll call.
Hi, Steve Welch.
Hi, John Moran.
Ivan Bartlett.
Hi, Tim DeBrio.
Hi, Mr. Shroom.
Okay. Unanimous? And how about the minutes for 10-2? Any issues there? Comments?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Uh, line 169, we talked about assigning a board member to each department as a liaison, but the minutes don't reflect who's who. So, uh, just to put them into the record, um, Matt Sherland was going to be the Fire Department rep.
Correct.
Tim DeBrio is Recycling Center. Ben Bartlett is Highway Department. John Moran's Recreation. And Steve Welch is...
Police.
The Police Department. Thank you.
Okay. Any other amendments, or any? See that, other than what you had pointed out, Ellen?
I think, um, the meeting didn't adjourn at 9:22. It exited to public at 8:25, so I think that was from the prior meeting.
Correct. 8:25 was the adjournment.
Yeah.
Anywhere else? If there isn't, uh, someone want to make a motions as amended?
I'm making a motion to approve the October 2nd, 2023 Select Board meeting minutes, as amended.
Second.
Okay. A motion made by Tim DeBrio, seconded by Steve Welch. Roll call.
Hi, Steve Welch.
Hi, John Moran.
Ivan Bartlett.
Hi, Tim DeBrio.
Hi, Mr. Shroom.
Okay. Unanimous? Uh, non-public me, uh, minutes for 10-2?
Make a motion to accept, approve the October 2nd non-public meeting minutes for the Select Board.
Second.
A motion made by Tim DeBrio, seconded by Steve Welch. Roll call.
Hi, Steve Welch.
Hi, John Moran.
Hi, Ivan Bartlett.
Hi, Tim DeBrio.
Hi, Mr. Shroom.
Okay. Unanimous? All right. Reports from the Assemblymen's Boards and Committees. Budget? Ellen, you were...
I was the only one in attendance, that's right.
You were the only one in attendance, yeah.
Um, we did a very thorough review of the third quarter financials. There was a lot of good questions asked. The meeting lasted for, I know, approximately an hour and a half. They did a recap on the school meeting, which was successful, for their state adequacy grants. And, other than that, we are moving forward with, uh, the next budget meeting will be the first Thursday in November, at which point they're going to review the, um, town CFAO budget.
Thank you. Planning Board?
Uh, one of the shortest planning board meetings we've had in quite a long time. Uh, the only case on the, uh, agenda for that night was actually postponed. So, we just went over a little housekeeping and different things that we talked about, but we were out of there within a half hour, so nothing.
Wow.
Yeah.
Sure.
Were you disappointed? Maybe 45 minutes. Well, I'm used to three hours, so yeah, it's a little bit of a...
You get a break here earlier for the public hearing, so.
Yeah, I got my timing.
Uh, CIP hasn't met yet, have they?
No, but we scheduled it.
Okay. When is that?
Tuesday, November 14th, at 5:30 PM.
Excellent. You said 5?
5:30.
5:30, okay.
Tuesday, November 14th. At 5:30.
All right.
Here in the conference room.
Any, uh, any more updates with Marston?
No.
No? Okay. Town Administrator report?
Okay. I will keep it brief, just because I know we're starting budget review. Um, I scheduled a dedication ceremony for the Chair of Honor donated by Rolling Thunder. Uh, the ceremony will take place in the Town Clerk's Office at 9:30 Friday, October 27th, which is when, um, you have a morning workshop scheduled to start our policies and procedural review. We can either do a brief recess, if we're not done with the work session, to partake in, in the ceremony, but I figured it would be a good time during the day when more people are readily available, uh, without bogging down a selectman's meeting. Uh, the SAU office? It will be at 9:30 in the Town Clerk's Office. Correct. October 27th. The SAU office has reported issues with their toilets not filling or flushing correctly at the Old Town Hall. Um, they've removed the toilets, they've had them cleaned. The issue is only temporarily resolved, and when I say temporarily, probably a day. Uh, Bodat Plumbing was out there, they completed a water test, and they found the iron levels to be excessive, six parts per milliliter. Um, a pre-treatment system is highly recommended for that location. The following quote's been provided, it's $6,400. That would include an entire flush of the system, but the iron buildup in all of the plumbing over there, even since the remodel, is amazing. Uh, it's probably something that we should have considered at the time of remodel. But, obviously, we, we know that we have hard water issues around here, so the quote is for $6,400. Uh, we already have quite a few repairs that have been completed this year, and we've depleted a good chunk of the Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund. So, um, obviously, this problem didn't occur overnight, but it is a worsening condition where they're not able to flush the toilets adequately. So, is, is it something that you want to try to consider for this year's budget, or...
So are they not flushing because they're not getting water in them?
Right. Because there's so, there's so much sediment buildup that the, it's just not flowing through.
Flushy entire.
I mean, can it wait till next year, though?
What's the maintenance? Did the company tell us what the maintenance cost of this is going to be to put the system in? Obviously, we're adding two cube softeners, two cube neutralizers. I'm sure there's maintenance that goes along with those.
I'm sure there's filters that need to be changed regularly.
Especially if it's that bad. You know, is that an incurred cost from us or the SAU? Most likely us.
Yes. We own the building.
I mean, really can't have it not. What do we have left in the, would this also go into the 40,000 building maintenance?
No. Because that was related to the Facilities Committee, uh, more or less hiring a property management firm to be able to address some of these items, but that would, that, the $40,000 that was raised, was raised to contract with a company to, to do so, not necessarily for routine building maintenance.
So we have the building fund left, and then we have whatever we have for the...
We have approximately $15,000 left in the Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund.
And then would this fit under ARPA as well?
Uh-uh. It won't, would it? No.
I'm just asking the questions to different... But it doesn't help us conduct business, but it helps the town conduct business.
I mean, gotta look at it that way. Even though it's, uh, the SAU's office, it's still a town building, it is still, the money's being spent one way or another from the town, whether they fix it or we fix it, because they need an SAU office.
Yeah.
The money's gonna be coming from somewhere.
Correct.
You know, the taxpayer's gonna pay, I mean, the town's paying for it either way you look at it, either come to school, or, I mean, can't come out of the school because it's our building, but in the big scheme of things, it's still the town taking care of the SAU.
I don't see how we cannot take care of it. Not in October. Even then, when, when would the, the next year's budget funds don't become available until March, April?
Technically, they're available as of January 1st. What you're doing is you're, you're spending on an assumed approved budget, so... Anything that we spend in the first quarter, if it's not approved as it was put forth to the voters, then you have to make in provisions at that point.
That's what the Capital Reserve Fund is for, I mean, it's building maintenance, right?
I don't like spending it, but I don't think we have a choice.
It seems...
This is not, doesn't seem to be a want and more of a need.
It seems just really, nah, I guess it doesn't seem that high, I mean, water.
You know, the question is, you know...
The maintenance end.
Well, that's one of the questions.
That seems like...
You know, when somebody says this, is the, what's the guarantee they're putting on this procedure, working and being successful, and that it's only filters, and that this is gonna work? I mean, I'm taking, we're taking their things for it, but, you know, I don't know anything about it. I hope that's, you know, worth every penny that we paid, that we have years of...
So this is a water softening system that they want to put in there?
Correct.
So that won't help with the flushing?
There's no filtration, none whatsoever?
No, we, the pipes are just clogged up, kind of...
It's iron and sediment.
Bad arteries right now, so as soon as this goes in, it's gonna shoot everything through, which is why they're gonna flush the system once they put it in. But I don't know if...
Three-inch drain just doesn't seem like rustwood.
And it's not the drain.
It's the wa...
The potable water coming into the tank is not filling.
So the tank's not filling?
Yeah. So then it won't flush, because there's no head of water, besides leaving a five-gallon bucket in there.
Would you like me to see if I can get some additional quotes?
I'm sorry, Ellen, what was that?
Do you want me to see if I can get additional quotes for comparison?
Well, we should always be doing our due diligence to ensure that we're getting the...
This doesn't fit above the 10,000 limit, though. So...
Skip would like to make his comment. Thing is, I, I don't have a soft water system at my house, and I have hard water, and I put a filtration system in, just to filter it, and every six months, I've gotta change, change it out, and it's fine. And you'll see the sediment and the iron that everybody talks about, all ready, stuck in that, that, that filter. So, um, you know, do we go with a filtration, put that in, which is far less, or do we, and then later have to, I don't know? But, I don't think we should just rely on one quote. But, I'm in agreement, Matt. This is something that needs to be addressed, and needs to be addressed.
When do we meet again? We meet again next week?
Two weeks, October 30th.
And they can't even get it to work for one day, though?
No, they can't. This has been going on since the new superintendent took over.
Oh.
That was the first that I read, I heard of it. Uh, Bodat was just able to get out there last week to address an issue that they were having with the mini-split and to do a thorough analysis of what might be the cause, and that's when he decided to do the water test.
Okay. Any more discussion on that?
Is Bodat who we use to use for all our plumbing issues?
It is.
Got a comment?
Yes, if it's the same company that's been doing our heating, everything.
Sorry, I didn't hear you, John. Any more comments on that?
No, let's get another coat.
Yes, Skip.
While that water in the town hall is unpotable, if you plan to be doing something associated with that, might that also be addressed?
You referring to that building, or this one?
No, that building.
Okay.
That was one of the reasons they moved here, the town hall.
Thank you for that. Okay. Yeah, we'll need to look into that, too, Ellen. Thank you, Skip.
It's probably history.
Okay. Um, lastly, your budget review for the evening will consist of the following departments: the Police Department, Emergency Management, Parks and Recreation, Conservation Commission, Elections, and I also have Tracy Black here to speak on her portion of the Finance Administration, which is the Town Clerk. That's obviously comprised of the Treasurer and the Bookkeeper as well. Other budgets are going to be pushed back until the meeting on October 30th. Uh, primarily, we had a lot of people that were going to be out of town unable to attend this evening, and there's also a lot of information. I just received the health insurance rates from Health Trust. I got that at 5:00 PM tonight. Uh, so there's calculations that are due for that across the board. The Property Liability Workers' Comp and Unemployment Compensation Rates are coming out tomorrow from Primex, and there's just other calculations that kind of affect all the departments. So, it, it will be a, a heavy loaded review night on October 30th for the budgets. And then, um, I don't know if anybody else is here from other departments to, to speak, but that's what I have available for information at this time. And then, the last thing that I have for you is, there was, uh, two pieces of email correspondence that were forwarded from the Rec Director regarding the access to the beach in the off-season, uh, that they would just like to bring up to you, looking to see if, maybe we can come up with some type of an agreement with the property owner who owns the land that the access is on, to see if we can somehow allow access outside of the hosted Memorial Day to Labor Day.
But that hasn't, so my question last meeting was, that hasn't changed, though?
Correct.
So it's always been that way, that people have been accessing the property?
Hasn't been enforced, and then hasn't been, now with the new...
Yeah.
Structure, it's more visible.
Yeah, the beach has always been closed, you know, where people walk around the gate and go, it just hasn't been enforced, I believe, is what the real, now it's being somewhere, you know, they're asking it to be enforced, so... I mean, down the road is the State Park entrance, which gives you all the trails and still walking trails.
Mm-hmm.
It's a beautiful area down there in Fun Days, so disappointed more people don't use it.
What else would you like to say? There's not much we can do and try to get a meeting with the individual, or...
The only thing we can do is ask, but...
Correct.
In the end, it's, it's their property. And if they don't want anybody on it between the, the dates in which, uh, we're not using the beach, I mean, it's within their right. And it's unfortunate after so many decades that folks were able to use that road to go down to the beach and what have you, but now, you know, things have changed as, as the town, you know, continues to grow and what have you. I mean, now we have houses down there, so...
And then, uh, back of my report, you'll just find the, the budgets that I talked about, or the proposed budgets for discussion this evening.
That's not right now, though.
Correct.
Action items review from last meeting?
We had correspondence that was received regarding Berry Road.
Yep. I see that Dirk is here today. You, uh, you wanna discuss that now, or...
Sure.
All right.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dirk Rotenheis at 3 Poor Farm Road. Um, I'm not gonna take up a lot of time. I did submit a, a letter with, uh, a lot of backup information to it. Basically, what's happened is, uh, over the course of many, many years that I've owned property, um, at 3 Poor Farm Road, there has been, um, violations and, uh, non-compliance at a multifamily, uh, dwelling, uh, adjacent to me, um, to my property. And the reason why I'm really here tonight is that, um, there has been very inconsistent, if any, uh, code enforcement, uh, to that property, and, uh, this dates back to 2008, uh, when the property was, um, obtained a variance, uh, from the zoning board to become a multifamily dwelling. At that time, there were con, uh, conditions put on that approval. Uh, one of the conditions was that a site plan be prepared and submitted to the Planning Boards, so the Planning Board could then do a thorough review of parking, dumpster locations, um, things of that sort. Uh, that was never done by the applicant, nor was it followed up by the town to, uh, require that or any follow-up, uh, back in 2008. Uh, in 2020, uh, the owner then, um, started making some modifications to his property, expanded the parking lot, uh, moved some shed around, uh, and that shed ended up being, literally, eight feet from my property line. Uh, and within the town's regulation, there's a 100-foot buffer around a multifamily dwelling, uh, that protects all the butters from that multifamily dwelling. And that 100-foot buffer, um, basically is the whole property. The property's only 202 feet wide, so 100-foot buffer, anything with, moved within that site would require some permit approval, some review by the town. And the applicant, or, I'm sorry, the owner, uh, has gone ahead and made changes without making any applications, so when the, in 2000, 2000, I think it was 2000, uh, he, when he moved the shed and had his, um, parking lot put in, uh, there were no permits granted, there was no permits applied for. Uh, I did come in, uh, make a complaint at that point, uh, which, um, the code enforcement officer said that required him to obtain a variance. A year and a half later, uh, a variance was heard and denied by the zoning board, uh, and that shed then was not moved. Since then, it has been moved, so in 2020, late 2022, uh, the shed was moved back to its original location. Everything was fine with that. What's happening now is that the, uh, owner has come in for a conceptual site plan approval or conceptual, uh, review by the Planning Board to expand the parking lot. And I'm getting some red flags here that things aren't gonna be, um, and, and when I say red flags, I'm getting feedback from the code enforcement that what he is allowed to do can still continue. So, uh, potentially, an expansion of a parking lot would be within his rights. Uh, this parking lot would be within that set, that, uh, 100-foot setback. Um, I attended the Planning Board, I made, uh, comments at the Planning Board, and I also, um, I'm sorry, I did not attend the Planning Board, I couldn't, I was out of town, but I sent a letter stating my concerns to the Planning Board about that. Since then, there's been a new shed, uh, constructed on the property within the 100-foot setback. Again, I had to make a complaint in order for any action to be taken. That shed, uh, is still there today. Uh, as far as I know, the code enforcement has allowed that and granted a permit for it. This has gone really far. Uh, I've used my own money, uh, for surveyors, for attorneys, to protect my property, whereas the town really should be, uh, taking on their own responsibility by protecting everybody's property. Uh, we have regulations, we have codes, they're just not being administered, so that's where I'm, something's falling through the cracks here, of, it's just not being looked at. It's not being taken seriously, um, but it is a costly endeavor for a property owner to protect their own rights from, from what's in a regulation. Uh, so there are plenty of regulations we have in the town that protect those rights, but they're not being met. And so, in 2021, I did file for, um, at least a response, uh, which was, which was provided by, uh, the town and, uh, the Select Board, uh, through their council, and, uh, that correspondence indicated that any further expansion, and this was in 2021, any further expansion on that property would require a site plan application. It would require a site plan application. That's what's stated in the town's attorney's letter for this property. So what I'm here to, to ask, at least the Select Board, but be aware that there needs to be some compliance happening on some of the properties, especially when there's a long history of non-compliance and violations. So, and that's just, that's what's happening adjacent to my property. It initially was approved at a four-unit multifamily. It is now being leased out with 13 bedrooms individually leased. So it is a rooming house, and it's just, it's, it's way overpopulated, that site. The site is only six acres, it can't really support that many. Uh, the application that the owner came in with a parking lot expansion was going to add, I think, five more parking spaces and pave the whole property in the front within those 100-foot setbacks. And it's also adjacent to a protected wetland, wetlands that have been flagged. Um, it's, it would be within literally feet of that, so I'm just making everybody aware, and I appreciate the time, just to make sure that we're, um, property rights are protected. Thank you.
Thank you, Dirk. Okay. I don't see anything for assessing general business, now we'll go right into the, uh, budget review. Where would you like to start?
They can draw straws?
Who would like to come up first for the budget? Please?
Get to leave first.
Who?
Good evening.
Thank you, fun.
How's it going, guys?
Good.
Good. Okay. Everybody has a copy of the budget, the proposed budget. I get, you want me to just start in with it, or do you guys have any questions? I mean, obviously, I can go line by line, I can give you like a generalization of what went up. Obviously, you can see it in front of you, the salary line went up a lot. Training equipment went up, for obvious reasons, I can go into why those items went up.
Well, you can, why don't you start with, like, you know, why the increases and...
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the, uh, like I said, the, the first line, if we just go line by line, the salary line, um, went up because those reflect, uh, salary increases that were approved. Does anybody have any questions about that? So that would be, you know, all eight officers at their rate of pay, working. That also includes, uh, I don't know, we talked about it the past couple of years, any holidays that are work, we have to try to calculate a number into, um, when they work holidays, they get double time and a half, so you kinda have to account for, you know, how much money that would be.
Okay.
Overtime line, uh, you know, I, I will tell you... Overtime line, you know, I will tell you that I'm going to go over that line this year. And I tried to increase it for next year. Obviously, the overtime line comes into play for a lot of reasons. If you have an officer who is on vacation, if you have an officer who is sick, if you have an officer that goes to training, obviously, you need that shift covered. So those are overtime shifts. And, you know, it's really, I mean, it makes sense if I have, you know, eight officers that accrue so much time of vacation, they're entitled to that vacation, and it has to be covered. Does that make sense? Does anybody have any questions about that? It should probably be higher. I will say that even at what I budgeted, it's probably even going to go over next year because I can't anticipate if somebody's going to be sick, if, you know, things happen, if we're down an officer. So if we're shorthanded, like right now, we're down one. So people have to cover those shifts, and it extends somebody's shift. So if we work 10-hour shifts, they could possibly work 12, stuff like that.
So the next line's part-time?
Yeah, part-time.
So can those part-time officers cover some of those shifts?
Yeah, I mean, the part-timer can help. You know, she hasn't gone to the academy yet. She'll go in January. But certainly, obviously, that's why we're trying to, you know, get a part-timer. We have one. Yeah, there was only one. Since I've been here, there's only one part-time position. You know, I guess the point is too, like even if I added a full-timer, you're still going to have, now you're going to have to cover that person taking vacations and taking sick time and taking training. You're always going to have overtime. You can't not have overtime. It's going to happen.
The days of having four or five part-time officers are long gone.
Yeah, no, not at all. And actually, the academy, they're going away from it. So they haven't ran a part-time academy in a while, and they're trying to run another one, and they keep canceling it because they have to have 10 applicants to run it, and they keep falling short. So the theory is that they're actually going to get rid of the part-time academy. That's from the director. And they're really trying to get rid of that and have everybody that's working already, like, you know, the new hires be full-time and go through the full-time academy.
So that line item is going to go up?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, well, yeah, my part-time line is going to go up for, number one, that's only them working two days a week at the rate of pay that they get. So that would literally just be working two shifts. Does that make sense? So that's not, that person, that's not them working, obviously, because they're part-time, 40 hours a week. That's just if she covers two shifts. That's what that dollar amount is. Does that make sense?
Chief, just remind the folks at home that your part-timer only allotted so many hours.
Yeah, they get, you know, I think it's 3,200 hours a year or 35. So it's obviously strictly regimented. And then I have to fill out paperwork at the end of the year submitting the hours that they worked. And such, you have to be in compliance with that. So it's really, obviously, we've said it all along, it's very difficult, obviously, in first responders to hire. We're shorthanded. There's nobody applying. There's nobody that wants to do it. And the people that you have, you just need to keep them. It's very difficult. And then the salary for like administrative assistant, that's going to go up. That's going to reflect merit raises, our merit raise. So that's why that line went up. Special duty, again, that, I never know how to explain that, but that's details, like if we work in outside detail for a company. Prosecution services went up. She, my prosecutor, who does a great job, asked for an increase. She does like four other towns. She asked for increases in those towns as well. Because gas prices went up for her to travel, court times are different. They're doing a lot of different things with the courts that require her to be there more often. That's also one of those things where I can't just shop around for a prosecutor. There's none to be found, and when you get one, you need to hold on to one. So that's an increase for her. Postage, I'll let Tom work that out. Stays the same. I don't know. Doing conferences stays the same. Publication, same thing. I'm trying to look at the next line that went up. Training, I increased it 2,500. That's ammunition cost, basically. I know that you guys probably are aware that the price of ammunition goes up. We have to qualify, obviously, with our firearms and do different trainings that require us to use that. So that's why that line went up. Training also is very expensive. There's a lot of free training, but there's also training that isn't for free, especially if you're getting to the more, you know, in-depth things. If you want to train your officers to be, you know, trainers on the material, people that, like I told you, I'm big for doing everything in-house if I can. So if I can get, obviously, everybody certified to instruct something, that's what I tried to do. So those are, that's that cost. Does that make sense? Any questions? Testing stays the same. Uniforms, the same. Software licensing, that's going to go up for a couple of reasons. Mostly, and it's not, it's not on us at all, we usually use, it's called IMC records. But they're going to a different software system called ProSuite that's going to be used by all of Rockingham County, a lot of other agencies in the state of New Hampshire. And there are increased costs for that. So that's why that goes up. And we have to really use that program, or we could go for our own, which would be way more money. But then we really wouldn't be doing a good thing because all that information that is stored is able to be shared with other departments, and it really is life-saving and safety-wise. So we would want to use the same system, obviously, that Rockingham County, that's our dispatch center, who they're using. It's called ProSuite. No problem. Does anybody have any questions about that? And then service contracts, that also went up. And the only reason why it went up is because I did the body cameras, and I put in, I'm obviously going to get, we're going to get half with that grant. And then I know I have an, you know, this year I was able to get it past the tech fund, which I will use this year. But for 2024, if I don't, if I don't get that passed, I've already committed to a grant and to money. And if that doesn't go, then I wouldn't have the money to cover the cost, the other 4,000. It's actually 3,500 for the body cameras. So I thought that was the safest way to do things. If my, if I don't, every year I have to go through that tech fund, Warren article. Does that, do you guys, does that make sense to you? I don't know if all of you were here when that went through.
And that's a five-year, right?
I signed a contract with Lonzo. It's a five-year thing. Yeah. So again, we'll get half paid for, and it's already, you know, done. And it just, it's the 3,500. That's why that price increased. Any questions, comments, concerns, advice on that?
I think this is a good idea for her to add it in as a line item budget because if the voters choose not to fund the $10,000 to her technology equipment capital reserve fund, then this is a placeholder. And then, you know, if they do, that $10,000 can be either used in subsequent years or for other technology needs, which is its intended purpose.
That was also, I have to say this, and this is only our second year doing the service contract line. That was also something different. I don't know even how to articulate this, but last year, the town, I lost my IT person on the PD side, and I think the town did too. And then so that we decided to go with back-bang. And then it was like confusing on who would pay for what or whatever the case may be. So I'm really trying to anticipate, you know, what I'm still paying for. If you guys have been over, and a lot of you have to my side, I do all the camera systems over there, and that costs money. Those comes out of service contract. So if alarm systems plus have to come in because we have a power surge and one of my flex capacitors break, and they got to come in and fix it, it costs money, and that's been coming out of that line. So there's a cost to doing that. I also have a second server now because obviously, our body cameras have to be on its own servers for safety and security. So there's a cost to doing that. So that line obviously went up. So I just, just to explain a little bit of what comes out of that line. Office supplies stays the same. Equipment, the same. Gasoline, that's, so that's another one where I know, like just looking at my, to date right now, my actuals, there's not much money left in that gasoline line, so it's probably going to go over. The budget committee cut that line last year, so if it goes over, you can I mean, we have to do business, you know, I have to still, and I say this openly and wholeheartedly, just because you cut my gas line doesn't mean I can't patrol. We have to patrol. I mean, there's, we have to respond to calls. We have to do our business. So I kept that the same, hoping that with the new system that we have over at Smoke Street, because we're getting a bigger discount, we'll kind of adjust where I'm going over. Maybe I won't in 2024. Does that make sense? So, yeah. Cruiser maintenance, kept the same. PD equipment procurement, all that stuff, the same. Radio repair, the same. Telephone, I guess, and I don't know how it was done, you know, the years before. It looks like last year was budgeted zero. We have cruiser, we have phones in the cruisers, cell phones for the person that's on duty, obviously, for various reasons. So that's that cost. That's the cost to have those cell phones, the 1980. Internet went up because Betsy tells me that Comcast rates went up. So you see a change there. DARE is the same. The next line, I changed the name of it. It was miscellaneous. But I made it community relations. I think it sounds better. And it really is more, it really relays what that line is for, you know. That could be anything from sending flowers to, you know, other agencies who if an officer gets hurt or gets killed in the line of duty, stuff like that. Obviously, there's other things that we do at the PD, you know, in times of crisis, you know, give out a teddy bear to a kid or some stickers or stuff like that. And that's really that line. If I'm hosting a training, I try to do some in-house stuff and invite other people. It's nice sometimes, you know, a lot of times, I'm not lying, like we'll pay out of pocket, everybody will pitch in. But it's not a bad thing to have a box of Joe for somebody or, does that make sense? So I upped it $100. And then pistol permits, that line is just whatever we bring in for pistol permits, whoever gets them. The cruiser, that's just a quote for 2024 cruiser, went up a little bit. Obviously, if you guys buy cars, you know that the price goes up. That's the state bid. That's, we go through Groupon. Yeah.
Just a quick question on the gas side of things. When did you guys start using, the police department start using the cube?
I'm sorry, what?
When did the police department start using the new cube at Smoke Street? Was that?
Oh, yeah, literally the past month. Yeah.
Within, like, did you have a full month of October, September, or?
No, I think, I don't think it was properly grounded until after the
Right.
I asked about that. And Betsy said the end of WEX was September, and then the filling of the cube is basically October. So they're both hit at the same time. WEX is a past date one.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because it's only $882. So I was just wondering. If it was the full month, I was thinking, wow, that's a lot of savings, but not the case.
And are you putting a Warren article to try to get the 2024 cruiser this year?
No, it's in my line. It's always been in my budget.
Okay. What is it? Every two years, three years? What do we have now?
It's every year. Yeah, we trade in the car and
And then we have rotational five. So it stays around for five years.
Right, exactly. You know, you can put the cruiser in a Warren article. A lot of municipalities do it. There's obviously, it's still going to cost because you're not, you're going to spend more in cruiser maintenance for the other ones, and then you might not get it, and you could run into situations where like in Northwood and Deerfield, they're running cruisers at over 200,000 miles, and it's a nightmare. So that's, it's up to you in the budget committee. I, my recommendation would be to keep it in the way it is because then they'll never get back there if you don't. But obviously, it's up, it's up to you guys.
Do we ever get much back on the trade-in?
Uh, yeah, I mean, there's been times, I think, was it not last year but the year before, I get like 12 grand on a cruiser, one of the trade-ins. Sometimes you don't. Just depends. I mean, we use Groupon, so it's whatever they say. I mean, I don't shop around to 15 different places to get a trade-in. I mean, the cars are driven hard. They idle. They go on all these backroads. I mean, a cruiser is driven, obviously, different than a regular vehicle. So I count my blessings with whatever they'll give.
Any questions in regards to police budget, comments?
Yeah, I mean, again, comparatively, like, yeah, you're right, right? The bottom number, 969,000 is comparative to every municipality police department around us. No, there's no sense. It's to the dollar.
Nonsense.
So, yeah, it is. It's, yeah, that's, sorry. I mean, I have to be able to run it. I don't know what else to do.
Okay. If there's no more questions or comments from the board, thank you, Font.
There's an EMD budget. It's the same. I haven't, I didn't change anything in it. Keep it at 3,500. There's some money in there for some equipment at 700. And, well, actually, Nixle comes out of that. That's what we pay, which is a great service. So I recommend, you know, keeping that there. That's huge. Is utilized a lot by us. And in this situation, I think it's a good place for it. I could add it to my PD line.
Okay. No comments or questions on that?
Nothing?
All right. Thank you, chief.
Font, thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
Guys, I try. How do you?
It's pretty cut and dry.
Hello.
Hi, Courtney. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Just be sure to stick your name in the mic and what your position is.
My name is Courtney Dubal, and I'm the Parks and Recreation Director. All right. I will start at the top, but I'm going to quickly just talk about how I got there. So you're going to see a pretty big increase in my salary lines for this year coming. I did a lot of work this past year on rec revolving fund and tracking the income per all of my programs and looking at staff salaries and kind of getting a feel for how that all worked out. I sent you also, did you get a copy of my memo that I attached with it? Okay. So with some of the changes last year that were made, I wanted to particularly track where rec revolving fund is at and will come to. So obviously, I don't have firm numbers from Betsy yet. She likes to reconcile my rec revolving stuff kind of towards the end of the year. But I have a really in-depth system of my own that I track, you know, income, expenses. We keep track of all of our expenses that go out for everything that we do. And you'll see listed there that our revenue as of August was about 222,000. Our expenses were about 217,000. So this year, we came very close, and that doesn't include credit card fees and the end-of-year stuff as well. So we pretty much, in terms of how I kind of budget and calculate things, came in break even, pretty much. Which does make me nervous that in rec revolving, we currently have benefits and half of my assistant's salary. Our program supervisors' full salary and benefits come out of rec revolving, and all of our seasonal staff salaries come out. So that is our biggest expense. So I kind of broke down those big expenses as of that August date, so you can kind of get a feel for that breakdown. And after talking with Ellen extensively about this, we thought this year, this would be the right kind of move to get the assistant's salary fully into general fund to free up some space in rec revolving to continue to allow the growth and our staff to grow as well in that fund.
And just to kind of sub off of that, we're still going to see, I mean, right now, those positions and benefits are funded by the rec revolving fund. We're just not seeing it on the operating budget. So when somebody looks at the Recreation Department's budget and says, oh, great, it only costs us $128,000 to run all these wonderful programs that we provide to the community, it's not a true and accurate depiction. It's not transparent budgeting. So Courtney and I have been back and forth on this, and I encouraged her to move those over because, you know, if we stop doing, if we stop having the programs that are fee-based and having that fee revenue come in, she's then cutting employment. She's cutting staff from the department, which is critical to it running. So I just want to So, I, I just want to say that, you know, as you're looking at this budget that she has proposed as a whole, and this is her third trial run, thank you for all of your hard work, we are still going to be seeing those rec revolving funds as an offsetting revenue to offset this budget. It's just a more transparent way of looking at what it takes to operate the department.
Yeah. And so, a little background too. So, last year, we were at about thirty-three programs and events. This year, we've jumped to fifty-six already. So, we've added, we continue to add a ton, and I couldn't do that by myself. And this department truly runs with three people and to the point where we are getting tapped out. So, we need to figure out, and I know we've talked a lot about the office space and kind of how that looks, but in order for us to add any more people, we really need more space to do so. And so this kind of is a way for us to free up some of those funds in rec revolving to use for those projects. And I also attached a kind of a project list that I've started to keep track of with quotes, of different, you know, different things, like gym floor, you know, replacement is being number one. Our wrestling mats and martial arts mats really need updating, and that's an expense of about fourteen thousand dollars. We have the bandstand that I was told the structure was pretty weak last year, so that's something that needs to be looked at, moving forward. Our, you know, active shooter adjustments that need to be made to the town hall because of our summer camp program that we do here. Repaving this area by the playground, this is a super unsafe area that we hold a lot of our events at. That needs to be repaved at some point. And a lot of those costs are, are, are big in comparison to what we do every day. So it's beginning to the point where I think rec revolving is what those should be used for versus that big staff salary line. Any questions? For that line? I also added in the town beach gatekeeper stipends. That's about eight hundred dollars. I think I bumped it to nine hundred this year because it's been years that they've been... I have two gatekeepers that will work from Memorial Day to Labor Day. I also wanted to add that there are a lot of other really amazing trails that Conservation Commission takes care of in the Trails Committee. So I know that it's a bummer the town beach is closed, but there's a lot of areas that people can walk in. So I did want to just make that known. But, so I, I, in my opinion, that town beach gatekeeper stipend, that is, that's a general fund responsibility. That's, that's not something that summer camp or aftercare should be funding. We did, and, and just another thing to add to that, we did also raise our rates last year significantly for summer camp and aftercare, to kind of cover those cost difference, and we still broke pretty close to even. So, that's a little bit about that. All good?
Did you see any decrease because you raised rates?
Uh, we raised rates to try and just cover all of those costs, which we did.
Did you see any attendance decreases? Like, did people?
We had, no, we did not. So that was really great.
They were still waitlisted.
We still, yep, we still have a waitlist, and we still have a waitlist for aftercare, which is great. But we raised it by like twenty bucks, which is, it's a pretty good, pretty good increase. So, yeah. Overtime line, that is used. It's not always reflected till the end of the year, but that does get used by the assistant who uses overtime. Postage stays the same. Dues and conferences, that's going to be enough to cover our conference this year. In the Budget Committee, they were confused at that. We pay for, our conferences in January, and we pay for that conference in November for the January conference. So that should be reflected soon. Training is staying the same. Our field, park, beach maintenance and mowing line, that is staying the same. That line has really grown to be how we kind of maintain our town beach area. That, that's how we maintain Marston. That's how we maintain boss fields. That's, that's a, a great, I know, this year with weather, it doesn't prove our point yet that we need those funds, but we do need those funds to keep those mowed and that grass the way that it should be and healthy. Now that it's being used, we will be mowing that more regularly during all sports seasons, so that you will see an increase there next year. We have been operating, oh, the equipment supply maintenance, that stayed the same as well. Our rep program line, we have been operating at eleven thousand dollars for like four to five years with little change there. So, we have added events. And every year, I try to notch this up just a little so that we can continue to grow. We added National Night Out with the Police Department, and that was a huge attended event. That all takes money to help make happen. So, we really need to, in our Halloween event, we keep saying, went to four hundred, and we're hoping for more this year. Hopefully, the rain holds off, but we're hoping that that's, you know, that happens. So, I bumped it up to thirteen thousand to hopefully cover those things. We, I'd like to make note that our senior programming typically comes from that line as well. We do a lot with a little, and we try to, to offer as much as we can for folks. We have a huge group of volunteers who make amazing food for our lunches, but if we don't have that, we have to pay for those lunches and make those lunches too. So, that's not totally reflected in this number because we have such a great group of volunteers, but that's just a cost that we may have, and that may kind of hinder other events and stuff that we, that we throw during the year as well. So.
Summer concerts were down this year.
Summer concerts, we went down one so that we could fit in some funding for National Night Out. I love to go back to five or six concerts. That's a really, those are really great attended events if we have no rain. Not so great if we have rain. Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions about that? I do try to get sponsorships to offset some of the costs, but they're not, they're not major, huge sponsorships, and I can't always guarantee that those funds will come in, but we do our best to offset some costs by, by doing that as well. Rec scholarship hardship, we kept in rec revolving for this year, so that line stays the same. Advertising stays the same. Our rec office supplies, to go back to, to what Ellen was saying, we, we wanted to put in some of the costs that kind of need to be represented in the general fund budget. So our big computer system, I added this year. That's what we do everything on. That's how we track attendance. That's how we track, you know, revenue expenses, all that kind of stuff. And that's, that's how we run the department. So that's something that needs to, to be represented in the general fund. And that's the only additional add that we added in that line.
So that, what, that was in rec revolving?
Yep, that was coming out of rec revolving.
But this is an annual, this isn't like a new system you bought? This is the annual cost?
This is annual. Yep, and it's, it went up a, a little bit, or it is predicted to go up a little bit this year. So. And then our rec equipment, I added in walkie-talkies. That's become something that's a little bit more prevalent. We use for our bigger events. We use for our programs day-to-day. I usually buy more every year because, well, I work with children who break them. So, that's only additional two hundred dollars. And the last line is our, I added in the recreation cell phones, which is about sixteen-twenty. So that's why that line went up, in addition to our office cell phones. Any questions about the budget?
How many cell phones do you maintain?
We have three.
Three of them?
Yep. We have one that's used primarily for summer camp and aftercare. One used for the assistant role for flag football and coordinating refs, refs and coaching and stuff like that, and then my cellphone that I use for work purposes.
And where does the van usually hide in all of this? Is that in the rec revolving fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
No, it's still there?
Yep, still there.
And that's all good? No issues or?
No issues.
Okay.
It's on the CIP plan for placement in what, twenty-five?
I think so. It's definitely something where if we had an updated van that was a little bit more handicap accessible, a little bit more spacious with a backup, backup cam, that we could do more senior stuff with it. Typically, we use it for transporting kids back and forth from the beach, but some smaller field trips, we'll use it for, for like April vacation camps, and then we'll use it for delivering. We have some homebound seniors that we still deliver to. Some lunches and, yeah. So, we love to do more trips, but it's really physically hard to get up into the van. So, and not a lot of room. So, eventually.
How much light do you suspect that's left in that van?
Honestly, it's in really, that thing is a tank. It's in really good shape. It's just, we're getting out of the useful, you know, stage of it. So.
Now, would you keep it as a backup? Were you looking to trade that in, or?
I am happy with either. Backup would be great on some of our busy beach days with eighty kids. It takes all day long to get down to the beach.
I mean, if you, if you had a crystal ball and the money wasn't an issue, when would you need that vehicle?
I would love it.
Twenty-five, she said.
Twenty-five, yep.
It's a CIP.
Yep.
Cost, yeah.
Yeah. It's definitely a priority, but I think we have other higher priorities that I'd like to see fixed.
One that's lower, handicap accessible, easy to get in?
Yep. Yep.
Or be one of the small buses.
That'd be great. There's no special license requirement than I'm in. Yeah.
Have we looked into any, like, the state surplus?
The state bid for the?
No, the surplus where they, they, they sell off,
The surplus vehicles.
You know, that might be an idea. That'll save some money.
Yeah.
Food for thought, food for thought. Sorry, I didn't mean to take the...
That's okay. Alongside with the budget, I also would like to talk to you all about the possibility of maybe doing a warrant article for a recreation commission for this year. It's no impact. It would be a commission that would help kind of advocate. I, I outlined it in your packet, but the purpose of a Nottingham Recreation Commission would be to serve as advocates on behalf of the Nottingham community in promoting recreation and leisure activities for all ages and interests. Support may also be provided through the acquisition of land and/or facilities for a public recreation and park area, and may prepare, equip, and maintain the land and/or facilities for recreation purposes. A lot of towns in New Hampshire have these. It's kind of like the trustees for the library. But it would kind of give residents some bigger input. We have a lot, like with Marston, you know, with the fundraising committee kind of dwindling, or it has dwindled out, we have projects and things that are in our grant plans with no real plan to get those done. We need to focus on fundraising efforts, and that's something that maybe a commission could help with, to do that as well. Just some thought.
How many people normally serve on the commission?
About five.
You think we'd get five people?
I have some interest already from some folks who would be interested in doing that. My goal, after doing our needs assessment, we're not quite done with it. I want to give folks a little bit more time. I only had a hundred and fifty, hundred and forty people fill it out, but there's, you know, we have a high population that wants pickleball courts, and we all know how much money that is. So it's, it's trying to kind of look at the long-term plan of the rec department, get community input, and have people who have some stake in the game help make some of these bigger things happen.
Be a non-salary position.
Yeah, it's just like another board. Yep.
And they're, they're appointed or vote?
I think they're appointed by the BOS. Yep.
Sorry.
Oh, appointed by the BOS, yeah.
Yep.
So this one, the language is this Article twenty-two one, is that the?
That is.
Of the Barrington one?
Um, that is our language. So, I don't know if we would need to update our recreation revolving fund language to reflect that of a rec commission as well. So that may have to be an additional warrant article, if that makes sense. Just to reflect that, you know, where does it say it?
No, I get it. I, I jumped ahead
Yeah.
too far. I get it.
But I have, up, up top, I have written kind of an example from Barrington and some others that I have found, just of some language. I, of course, want review and input from you all. But I think, I think we're at a point where that would be great in moving forward with, you know, just some of that big future planning stuff. And trying to get, you know, represent all things like youth sports and seniors and pickleball and all that fun stuff.
Excellent.
All right.
Wonder if we cover that stuff later on in the, like, your breakdowns?
For what, the warrant articles? Yes.
Because those are due in January.
Those will be, yes. Those will be the last part of our review. Keeping it in mind for, as we're getting there. We'll do the operating budget and then...
Any questions or comments on the rec budget?
So just the numbers obviously went up. And the rec revolving fund?
It's just a matter of moving a lot of them over to an operating budget line item rather than just being masked in the rec revolving fees.
Okay. And then we expect the rec revolving fund just to kind of be able to increase now instead of treading water? Gotcha. Okay.
Great.
Thanks, Courtney.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Courtney.
No problem. Just three quick things. We have our Halloween festival coming up this Saturday, which should be really fun. It's gonna be rain or shine. We'll have fun either way. Our playground structure build is on November eighteenth. We're always looking for volunteers for that. That's gonna be a bigger project, which is exciting. And then, of course, our Hallow, Holiday Parade, we've had a lot of questions. Registrations will, will be opened after Halloween completes. So, on to the next one. But, thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Evening, Dee. Dee Decker, Eleven Life Drive. I'm here on behalf of the supervisors of the checklist. One of the things that's important to understand about the election section of the budget is it is actually three parts. There's the town clerk portion of the budget for elections. There's the moderators' section for the budget. And then there's the supervisors. So when you look at the overall budget, our numbers only are only a portion of that number. I can answer questions on a number of the different parts of it, but I'm here specifically to talk about the supervisor portion of it. And what, one of the things that is not included in what I sent you guys was any cost for replacement or cleaning of the equipment that was, that got wet, got moldy, and probably needs to be replaced. So that's not reflected in this anywhere at all. So, planning for the presidential year election is like herding cats. Because we have to try and figure out what turnout is gonna be, because turnout affects what we do as supervisors, which is different than what the town clerk does and what the moderator does. So the moderator's portion of the, of the election is Election Day itself. Supervisors do a significant amount of work before, both prior to Election Day and after the election. And each election, based on turnout, takes us a different amount of time. And so trying to figure out what turnout is gonna be is, you know, kind of difficult because it changes every year. The other thing that really affects our work after an election is, one, is it a primary? Because there's additional work that we have to do because of a primary. But also, what we anticipate for Election Day registrations. And because this will be the first presidential election prior to the voter verification that we did in 2021, there are a number of voters that were taken off the, the voter registration rolls because they hadn't voted in the previous four elections. So they're automatically, we send them a letter. If they don't respond to the letter, they're automatically removed. We removed over eight hundred people just from that alone. In 2012, so 2011 was, we do it every ten years on on the one year. In twenty-twelve, which was the presidential election year after the verification, we registered almost five hundred people just on General Election Day in November. So we, what we'd have done since twenty-twelve is tried to kind of spread things out and offer office hours just for the supervisors, for people to come in prior to the elections so we can kind of get ahead of it so that we're not as crazy busy on election days. And one of the other things that we're working on is training a couple of new supervisors. So assistant supervisors so that they will have access to the statewide database and so they'll be able to do some of the computer work as well as helping us register voters on Election Day and look, kind of learning the ropes so that if we lose a supervisor, we have somebody that is already trained to kind of bring in because our jobs are very, very specific and involved. So if you look at the line for the supervisor salary, it went, and I don't know what the numbers are from this year because frankly, they're not in what I was sent for the, the budget. So we had budgeted about ninety-eight hundred dollars and for twenty-twenty-four, the budget is for twenty thousand eight hundred dollars, a significant increase. So that is based, so what I did is I took the number of hours that we worked both before and after elections in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-two for the general and the primaries and figured out approximately how many hours we worked for those elections and then based our numbers off of those. I think that's the line that I can probably bring down some. And, but that was just my, my, my first pass at trying to pull all of these numbers together.
Is that line thirty-nine, Dee?
That is.
I was just going to ask if you could just repeat that figure because I think what we input into the worksheet in one of the prior versions, so our figures are a little bit different.
So what line is that?
I know there was a lot of back and forth emails and we might've just grabbed the wrong version of your request.
So how do I know what line it is? It says line three.
Is it, it's election salary supervisors?
Election salary supervisors.
Okay, so it's what you're looking at is nineteen thousand one hundred and fourteen.
Yep.
On your sheet. So the correct number is how much, Dee?
Twenty thousand, uh, twenty thousand eight hundred dollars.
For the budget difference or the proposed budget?
For the proposed budget. So, and that includes the salaries for supervisors and assistant supervisors for town election, general election, state primary, federal primary, school deliberative session, town deliberative session. So for all of those, so that's the, uh, the, the salary amount. That also includes training for the upcoming statewide database change, which they've been promising now for two years. I put it in there again for training. Whether it's going to happen, I don't know. Frankly, I hope it doesn't because I don't want to be dealing with that during presidential election cycle. So the next thing is, is postage. So our postage runs around five hundred dollars. We don't send out a lot of letters, but we are required to send out letters when somebody requests that we remove them, someone from the checklist, we have to send out a letter. But also anytime there's a property change, we're given the inventory sheets. And if we determine that somebody may have moved, we have to send a letter to them. So that's for postage. This is a quiet, so twenty, the, the, the one year, you know, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-thirty-one, those are big postage years because that's the verification, but we don't have to worry about those numbers right now. We don't do conferencing and workshops. The state does usually like a two-hour training for us. So that's pretty negligible. So there's not, so I didn't even put anything in for that. Training and support, that number is actually for the election worker training. That's not for supervisors. We run the training. But that number is actually to train the election workers. So those, the ballot clerk, the ballot clerks, the greeters, anybody, the, the assistant moderators, the assistant town clerks. So I put that number in our budget, in our section, only because I'm the one who actually does, facilitates the training. And that includes the training for you guys. That currently is scheduled for November thirtieth. We're going to do two sessions. We're going to do one from ten to twelve-thirty. We're going to do one from six to eight-thirty. We are going to make that a required training for all election workers, especially where next year is going to be so highly visible. And we're going to have a lot of, you know, observers and, and things like that that are going to be around. Advertising, that line is now zero. We're no longer required to post our postings in any newspaper. So we're able to reduce that to zero as long as we put it on the town website and a bulletin board here in town. Kelly usually takes care of that and puts out a number of bulletin boards for us, so that's just printing. Office supplies is minimal. We try and keep that, you know, usually do we need to replace a mouse or a keyboard or something like that? Election equipment, this number is for an additional laptop and for the software, for the Microsoft three sixty, is it three sixty?
Yep, three sixty-five.
So that, for that license. So this is a laptop that the town bought for us for last year. It's fantastic. It does not need to be as big as this. This is seventeen inch. We could do a fifteen inch. We had, we can do smaller gig. So I think we can reduce the amount, but I left it at the same amount that, that Ellen gave us just due to price increases and things like that. But Ellen and I can work on what we actually need for computers. One of the reasons that we need a computer is the other two computers that we have are running Windows ten. Microsoft is going to stop supporting Windows ten in October twenty-twenty-five. Again, the state has said that the new soft, the new software is going to run on anything, including phones and tablets in every operating system, but we haven't seen it yet. So until I actually see it and have my hands on it, I'm not saying that we're going to get it. So I just want to stay ahead of making sure we have the equipment that we need. Mileage is negligible because at most we go to Concord and we carpool together. So we're looking at a total line for just the supervisor and that training for election workers at twenty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars.
And then in addition for this department budget, we have the moderator's salary at twelve hundred dollars. That's a stipend. And the election worker salaries. Dawn Farnold, our moderator, had calculated approximate number of hours that will be required. I think it was a total of twelve hundred and ten estimated hours and election workers are paid at ten dollars an hour. So there's an additional twelve thousand one hundred.
I actually personally think her number of required workers is low based on, and then I know that twenty-twenty was a COVID year, so we used a lot more people. But I think that we do need some additional support, especially in the hallways and things. So we, it might be a little bit higher than that just because of, you know, the, just to manage the people with, with turnout, so. So.
Did I hear that new election machines are coming? Is it just software?
So those are two totally separate things. So yes, there is a proposal out there for the, the ballot count machine. So the machines that we put the ballots in. So the state is looking at two different models for those. And then the town will have to do a warrant article and vote to which one and, you know, how much they are and those kinds of things. Do we want to buy one or do we want to buy two? So that's the ballot count machine because the LHS is no longer going to be servicing the ones that we have. It's really hard if something goes wrong with it right now to get parts because they're just so outdated. So the state is looking at two, so that's the ballot count machines. The statewide database is what supervisors work on. It's actually the database of all voters. And so they're working on making that a little more user-friendly. The other thing that you may have heard about is the, the tablets for checking voters in. And we have sort of determined as a group, so the town clerk, the moderator and supervisors, that that is not something that we need to do in Nottingham. We're just too small. Those run about five thousand dollars per tablet and you need anywhere from four to six tablets to make that work. So it just doesn't make a lot of sense for us in a town our size to, to, to do something like that.
And then quickly, the advertising, you say we don't need anymore, but this shows twenty-twenty-three, actual year-to-date, at almost six thousand dollars.
So that is, so the supervisor statutory requirements no longer require being in the newspaper. However, the town clerk's requirements may be different. And so that's a combined number. And so that may, so we did put them in, in the paper for this year. So for this year, there was, there was a dollar amount in there. I don't know what the, the town clerk is required to do for her postings.
Okay, I just don't want to make it zero and then.
No, so it's.
Then a six thousand dollar bill.
No, no, no. So, so, so that's why I'm saying on, when I submit our budget, our amount for that line is zero. And then you have to take into account the moderators' and the town clerk's portion and all of those come together into what you guys see.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So it's a little, this, this group, this line is, this group lines is kind of confusing.
So I'll have to check with Dawn as far as.
See where that number came from.
The advertising. We might have to amend that from zero just to include.
Yeah. And it definitely can't be zero because it has, it would have to at least be a dollar.
Yeah. Oh, right, to keep it, to keep it active or whatever, yeah.
Is that the same for printing? Because printing.
So no, so the printing costs, so the printing cost is another one. And I don't know why it's the fifty-four thousand dollars or whatever that number is that's in there.
Fifty-seven hundred.
Oh, fifty-seven, so maybe that, and mine, maybe there may have been a decimal place error.
It's a, it's a cost of printing the ballots.
So it's a cost of printing the ballots, but then it's also the cost of printing all of our checklists. And so we have to print that big checklist for every single election. And every time we update the checklist, I update the voter list, we have to print the simplified version for the town clerk. And so the checklist is usually around thirty, three hundred and sixty pages that we use right now for an election. And then the simplified version, which is what the town clerk has, is about a hundred and seventy pages. And we may print that twelve, fifteen times a year. And that, that, and then the actual checklist, we print a couple of times a year. And then there's other reports and things. We try and keep most of our stuff as electronic as possible so we don't print it, but there are some things that we, that we have to print.
So that's my, the budget is a thousand dollars, but this year it was for fifty-six.
So for, for.
That's for you.
Supervisor portion. I'm, I'm, that's what I'm budgeting.
Laurie will be able to attest to the town clerk's side. So this, this budget as a whole is going to have to be looked at once we get the town clerk's side.
Right, right, exactly, exactly.
And then quickly back, so the training, the election worker training doesn't, and then we had another line from Dawn, election worker salaries. Technically, that training is the paying the people that go to training?
Correct, yes.
Is, are they the same number or they're different? The other one from Dawn is only election day salaries and then this other one is just training on non-election.
That is correct. Now, the training, so we need to do two trainings for next year. One is going to be for the primary and one is going to be for the general because they're different trainings, because there's different things that the ballot clerks have to do depending on the two trainings. The training for the primary is in November of this year, but it's not in the budget for November of this year. I put that number in next year's budget so that if somebody comes to the training and then works the primary, which I can't give you the date because it still hasn't been set, but if they work the primary, say they work six hours, they put eight and a half hours on that time sheet to account for the two and a half hours that they did the training in November. So that way, we're training them this year, but we're paying them next year. Well, because, so Ben, I, I see your face. So does it make sense for fifty people to send them checks for twenty-five dollars? Or does it make sense to add it to their check for when they work at the primary in January?
I, I see your point. I see it.
And it's not budgeted for this year. So this way we can kind of push it off. I was trying to be creative.
So then we don't have any of Lori's information?
Yeah, Lori's going to present at the next September thirtieth meeting.
Yep.
Sweet.
And that, that won't be separate? That'll just be included in this so we can see true reflection?
Yeah, we'll do it as well, add it into this.
Because I'm assuming that's why year-to-date, it looks like we're lower than budget.
So how many supervisors and assistant supervisors are we looking at?
So we are required to have three supervisors. And so that is Sandy, Ruthann and I, we're all elected supervisors. And then we currently have one supervisor, assistant supervisor, Joanna, Erin Darcek. And we are training, and she's a former supervisor, so she's trained. We are training two others, so we will have three assistants. They don't work, so like if we're doing an election, they may work six hours in the morning and another one, six hours in the afternoon. It's split a shift where we're there from seven o'clock, six o'clock in the morning until two AM when we go home. So it's just somebody, they're there to help us manage the, the registration process. But then we're training them right now on all of the things that we do. So if somebody gets sick or we lose somebody next year, we have people in the pipelines to be able to fill in. Any other questions on the budget, on our part of the budget?
No, no, I understand it better.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why I, I prefaced this with, this portion is a little confusing because it's three parts.
Yeah.
So we have proposed a planning meeting for the twenty-twenty-four elections with Ellen. More, you know, any of you are more than welcome to come. And then the moderator, the supervisors and the town clerks are going to get together and kind of figure out all the things that are needed, kind of what equipment is needed to be replaced and, you know, those kinds of things. So we need to put, get that on the calendar. But then I'd also like to propose a warrant article for, to change the way the moderator is compensated. The moderator in years past would basically show up to run the meeting. And so it was appropriate for them to be paid per diem because they would just show up at a meeting, run the meeting and then go home. With the way the election process is these days and with the, the very quickly moving laws and changing in dates and all of those kinds of things, the moderator does a lot to prepare for an election. Go, you know, meetings, has to follow election law changes and those kinds of things. And then all of the scheduling, all of the recruiting, helping us train and then scheduling for all of the election workers from greeters, ballot clerks, assistant moderators, assistant clerks. They don't do the supervisor, the assistant supervisor, but everybody else. And then trying to make sure that you guys know everything that you guys do. There, she, the moderator is working for pennies at this point. And I really think that there should be a change in compensation, whether it be a stipend per election or, or hourly. And I think the, everyone else that has to do with working elections is paid hourly. And so I think it's appropriate that the moderator is also paid hourly. That is my opinion. I have not discussed it with her. But since we're talking about, you know, proposed warrant articles, I think that is something that would be smart to, to consider. So any other questions? All right, well, you guys know where to find me.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Dee.
And when we get to, Tracy's going to review the tax collector portion, but hers is also enveloped into the Finance Administration budget, which you don't have. I'm still working on the bookkeeper and the treasurer portion of it, so she's only going to touch on her topics.
That's this.
Correct. Yeah, there's a memo in your packet.
Yeah, so Tracy Black, tax collector. Just go down the line items. So salary, I included a three percent cost of living increase. And then the next line item is postage. I have to send out the tax bills. Hopefully that'll start going down. I've been notifying people that they can get their tax bills online. I sent it out on the website. I've sent it out in the Nottingham newsletter. I'm starting to get, people are starting. I'm starting to get, people are starting to hear about it, they are starting to to do that, so I'm hoping that'll start going down. Printing, I have special paper that I have to have, um, that's what it costs. The um dues and conferences, so both um Emma and I have to have dues we pay. And then um we have spring conferences that we need to go to. So that's what, that's that budget. Registry of deeds, as um liens are paid, we have to notify the registry of deeds when I do liens. So those expenses, it, I anticipate staying similar to what it was last year. Um, training and support, I did get approval for the um new tax collector training for Emma last year. Unfortunately, she wasn't brought in until after the training was over, so I want to send her to the new tax collector training. I'll have my last year of certification training. And then a spring training is is um is something for both of us to go to. So that went up a little bit, but then the conferences went down because um I I don't see the need to go to the conference when I'm going to this, to the certification training. But I did want to keep an extra hundred dollars invol- available because if they have, um, I could look at the agenda and if they have a subject that I need, like this year we had um camp sites, which we have one, uh, it was important to go to. So that's why that conferences went down a lot because I'm not going to the whole conference, but I do want to be able to go to um a day of training if required. The software licensing, the four thousand is just Avatar Tax Collect, so it's just mine. I know that Betsy has uh BSMI. Office supplies is about um six hundred dollars, I have envelopes to send the bills out, uh binders and files and things like that. Uh mortgage research, our mortgage research didn't go up last year, so I'm anticipating it'll probably be around twelve hundred dollars. It's not going to be that high this year, we didn't have um as many liens and deeds as I thought we would, so that's good. And then the miscellaneous, that's the invoice cloud, which is also part of the um online billing to be able to collect payments. I wasn't sure if it should be blended in with the software or if it should be separate, because it is kind of a separate thing, it's a different bill and everything like that. That's so that we can take the credit cards and e-checks. And that's really all there is. Any questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Excuse me?
It's pretty straightforward.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? I'm sorry.
No, I don't have questions.
Did you just mention what they, you said that you didn't do as many this year, liens and deeds?
Mm hmm. I'm sorry, did I do what?
You didn't this year issue as many liens and deeds.
Well, I haven't.
We haven't done the deeding yet.
I haven't done the deeding process yet, but I don't have as many, um, I don't have a lot of properties that I'll even be asking about deeding. But liens were not as much as they were the year before.
That's good.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's good.
I thought so.
Yeah, that's, I just, that's a, that's a good point, so I just. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
Come up then.
So good evening, I'm Sam Demerit, Chair of the Conservation Commission, and I think you have a copy of the my proposed budget in front of you. Well, there was very few changes there, uh, some of the, uh, I haven't gotten some of the dues in yet to get them paid. Uh, the uh co- conference that we're going to is uh Saturday, November fourth. So there's nothing spent at this point because nobody went to the conference in April, so. So that's why those are zeros and uh I'm not sure what, sometimes the office supplies, uh, they come up a little later in the year. Uh, I do have one on the water testing um meter that we use, one of them that we use. When I check out at the end of the day, it's not reading the correct amount. We borrowed uh one from the DES and that was giving me the same problem. And so we got a new bottle of 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 stuff that we, uh, you know, check the.
Calibration.
Check out, check procedure. And that one was reading low, you know, there's supposed to be uh two two thousand and it ranges between sixteen hundred and twenty four hundred to be good. And I've been, I've been below fifteen hundred on the last two water tests that I did. So uh either going to have to have it replaced or repaired. DES tells me the replacement cost is around twenty five hundred dollars. I'm hoping to get it repaired and uh also, uh, you know, look for a grant um in order to get the other one replaced.
What do you do the water testing for? What do you do the water testing for, for the conservation?
Oh, we're doing it, uh, it's the uh, it's a V-Rap program through DES, a volunteer river assessment program. We test uh two places on the North River, on the North River, one at McCrillis and one up on Freeman Hall Road and one on the Little River on Smoke Street. So we do three tests probably every other week during the summertime.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, what is it that you're looking for? What is it that you're testing for?
Well, we test uh for uh pH, uh, test for salinity, test for uh uh. How long does it? It's tell how much junk is in the river anyway.
Gotcha, okay.
But uh, and we we also measure the the temperature of the water and the uh look, we'll take a visual look at, see how clear it is or or not clear. And uh also the, what the level of the river looks like. Uh, most tests this year, where the the river was fairly high. Sometimes when you get into August and so, you very, just have a little bit of water you can test. But this year, it was no problem.
But that machine you're using to test might be broken.
Hmm?
The machine you're using to test might be broken and the cost to replace it could be two thousand dollars. Do you hear what I said? You just, you mentioned the thing you're using to test the water, right?
Yeah, we have, we have, we have three different meters that we use. Uh, two of them uh test just one thing each. And this other meter that uh we're having problems with it, it does three basic tests on it. Uh, and like I said, the the end of the day test that we compare against a known amount has been failing. So I don't know how this affects some of the other tests that we've been doing with that meter.
But the, the cost to replace it was how mu- the cost to replace it was how much?
Replacement cost?
Replacement cost around twenty five hundred dollars is what DES.
For all three or just one?
So I'm, I'm going to try to get it repaired.
For just one?
For the, just this one meter. You know, the other two meters are working fine, uh, so I'm not looking to replace those. There's a possibility I may uh try to uh set up a um you know, like the fire department and stuff like that does a, you know, a, an equipment uh thing that we put into, so much into every year. And then you'll have it there to replace a meter later on. One other thing, the the Trails Committee is looking to um publish a little book showing the ta- trails in town. People can buy this little booklet. Uh, we're looking into the cost, we don't know, I have any idea at this point what it was. Apparently Barrington has one that they've used and put all their trails in and, uh, you know, the pages are coded. So if you're out in the rain, they don't uh destroy the pages.
But somebody would buy this or is this something you were giving to people?
Uh, well, I think what they, Barrington has, you know, have put in a, you know, an amount and then they um to get this thing pub- a number of them published, or a number of books published. And then they, I think they sell them at essentially a cost, you know, for anybody who wants to look.
That works.
That would put money back into the, into the fund or whatever, whatever we have for that. Um, I guess that's. Like I say, we haven't been to any conferences, so I don't have any mileage. I did uh take the uh equipment back up to DES to store for the winter. And uh I was going up that way anyway for another thing, so I didn't charge any mileage for it. But the conference in, over in Pembroke, there's two of us signed up for it and I've got spot for three more members to sign up, you know. They give us a lot of information, uh, you know, there's three, three gr- session, two, three time sessions and there's eight different subjects you can take in, you know, in each sign, time session. And a lot of basic information that uh helpful for the Conservation Commission members. There's even have, have a, one of them is, you know, the basics for being a Conservation Commission member, so. So my, I put my budget up, what, uh, about a hundred and, hundred and fifteen dollars over what it was last year. You know, we didn't have any increase last year, so even though I had put in for some, uh, I was told that, you know, there was eight, the the uh I just want to stay the same for last year.
Excellent, anybody else?
Any other questions, comments? No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, open bids, oil and propane.
See yellow folder.
Yes. You uh. Okay. It's not your thoughts. I don't remember seeing that in emails, that's the only, that's the only thing we have, is that copy right there.
Yes.
Yeah.
So with Irving?
There's uh, there's a total of three in there, there's one from Palmer Gas.
Yeah.
Suburban Propane and then Irving.
They own the tanks, but they'll let somebody else fill it?
No.
Yeah, we'd end up having to swap the tanks if we go with a different provider.
Sometimes a new company will buy out.
They can buy them.
Just send Irving them, whatever.
We did make it clear on the RFP that the tanks were owned by Irving Oil. I solicited to, I think there was eight or nine companies and we received three responses back, so that could be a result of it. The fact that Irving owns the tanks, maybe some providers did not choose to bid for that reason.
Did you want to review those or?
No, I just wanted to, just have a look at it, because that's the first time I'm seeing it, it's the first time for you.
They were doing the office today at noon.
Well, Irving looks to be the best.
Which one?
Irving.
Yeah.
I mean, they're ten cents higher than the only guy at propane, but they're a lot less than oil, so.
And the fact that they already have the tanks, so they're going to maintain the tanks. They're on tanks.
Propane and heating oil.
Yeah.
All town buildings.
Yeah.
Did we get any kickback yet or we have, no, it hasn't been long enough, but have we received any bids for our sander?
Not yet, they're due November sixth, whenever our next, our first meeting is in November, I think it's the sixth.
I think it was in November, so it's any activity on it.
What?
Figured I would have got it pretty quickly.
Think somebody would have bid on it. This was our current usage.
Yes, it was uh for the period of, I think it was November first to September first.
Everybody had a chance to review it, is there questions?
What they are.
Do you just want to read them? Do it to the, to the public for the open bids and then just?
Yep.
I mean.
So for suburban propane, we have a uh four dollar and sixty nine nine cent per heating oil bid and a propane at one dollar and nine 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 cent per gallon. For Palmer Gas and Oil, propane would be fixed at one point eight nine nine dollars per gallon. And heating oil would be at three dollars and thirty nine nine cents per gallon. Um, okay, and then Irving, uh propane would be at one dollar and four one six cents per gallon and fixed heating oil at uh three dollars and four four six cents per gallon. So Irving has quite a bit cheaper on propane and a little bit higher on the diesel for, compared to Palmer. Even, uh, diesel, sorry.
So it's five cents difference on the heating oil between the lowest bidders for heating oil and forty seven cents difference in the LP?
Uh, yes, the lowest is Palmer at one point eight nine nine, Irving at one point four one six. Excuse me.
Did we do the math to see what the total?
Did we do the math to see what the total cost was, based on last year's figures?
No.
Last year, it looked like we were contracted at?
We didn't have a contract last year.
Okay.
In the transition between the town and administrators, the heating oil and LP was not put out for bid. So we just paid whatever the market rates were at the time.
Did we have the consumption?
We did have the consumption.
Which we put in the bid.
Yeah, it's on the front page of that folder.
Back. All right, estimated fuel usage from November 1st, 2022 through September 8th, 2023. We anticipate number two heating oil to use five thousand four hundred gallons, and propane at eight thousand four hundred gallons.
What was the propane, I'm sorry?
What's that?
How much was the propane consumption?
Eight thousand four hundred gallons.
Then you're going to pay for the heating oil.
Hopefully somebody else is doing the calculation other than me.
I was relying upon you.
Don't rely on me. I always double check. I have a dumb phone. All right, for rounding, Palmer, eighteen thousand three fifty-five for heating oil, fifty-nine fifty-two for propane. Irving would be eighteen thousand six hundred and eight for heating oil, and eleven eight ninety-four for propane, based on estimated consumption. So overall, Irving is the lesser.
Yep. And the tanks are already here, we don't have to... This is for several facilities, right?
Yes, it's for all town.
Propane's used at the library, Dane Building, Highway Department, Fire Department, and Recycling Center?
Yes.
That's two small tanks there.
Yep.
All tanks are owned by Irving, so that could be a potential cost too for swapping over.
That's just shy of four thousand dollars difference between the two providers.
Could you add my address to that?
Yep. I guess I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to accept the Irving bid provided for heating. I don't know if we need much more than that.
A second?
Motion made by Matt Sherland, seconded by Tim DeBrio. Roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Ben Barlet.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Matt Sherland.
Okay, unanimous.
Suburban. Suburban.
Did your motion only include the heating oil, or did you include the propane? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Oh, I accepted all, everything from Irving.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Rosenboro Appeal on merger of lots.
At your last meeting, you approved an application for restoration of involuntarily merged lots for Susan Johnston, Thirty-Nine Moores Road. We have an abutter who has questioned your decision, has provided some information that the, not only the driveway, but both the building are on both lots that we've unmerged. The assessor, I'm not sure that he actually went out and did a site visit. He was going on the information that he had available to him. He had provided two cases regarding merger by conduct, stating that the driveway was between the two lots, or that was the assumption, of which could have been dealt with by an easement if she did choose, if the lots were unmerged and she chose to sell them if the driveway was an issue. But now there's question about the structure being spread against both properties. So I know that the property owner was going to be having a survey conducted, and I don't know if the survey results will be able to define, you know, whether the structure was contained just to the one lot, or if it is across two. But at this point, he is appealing your decision, which he has the right to do under RSA 676-5, which would require an appeal to the zoning board of adjustment for the administrative decision that you made. So I'm just, I'm bringing it to your attention if you would like to see that route, or if you want to look back at your decision and determine whether any evidence has come forward, if that needs to be considered.
Yeah, there's definitely some confusion on assessing supervisors' words by my, my reading of it, which I think I would have had more questions. So do we know where the old line used to be? Because I would assume that this picture we're looking at is the two merged lots, and that they were equal lots, and I could see where the line would probably go right through the center of that, or...
Well, that particular parcel we're talking about was originally three lots, not two.
I thought it was four, actually, originally, and they merged two.
They merged all three.
I thought at the last meeting you had said four, and two of them were split off.
And sold.
Prior to this.
Yeah.
I think the true question is if the property lies, the building lies on the other lot, then you can't unmerge them.
Then it would have been a matter of merger by conduct. So at this point, the, we have to file something at the Registry of Deeds acknowledging that the lots are being unmerged through this process, which that process has not, I haven't recorded anything at the Registry of Deeds because of the appeal window, so. If you want to proceed with advising Mr. Rosborough to appeal your decision, then I can go that route.
Just bother me if he wants to appeal it, let him appeal it.
Yeah.
I mean, the homeowner, I mean, every unmerged lot that I've been through, everybody knew where their property lines were, and it was just a vacant lot that they were taking off. I've never had.
And I thought that's the way it was explained to us.
Never anybody ever come in from, just trying to unmerge a lot with their house on it. I mean, that would be...
Can't do anything with it.
Right. I wouldn't see why you'd even come in front of us if you had a house on another lot, if you were trying to make it... So.
And this building was here beforehand, do we know?
I think you said that house has been there for decades, right?
Long time.
Yeah, it's been probably forty years or longer, it's a...
I mean, one point three acres is a pretty large lease front lot. So what, and you're saying these stone markers we're seeing?
Did we unmerge it into three, or did we?
No, to two, no, I'm confused.
We unmerged it into two.
Into two.
Okay.
She was proposing or asking us to take the last lot over, which is supposedly vacant.
Joe Aldois, probably that concrete down to one of these, which would be to the left of the building. I don't know. What seemed kind of clear seems very muddy now. But you're saying at this point, we've already made a decision, we're acknowledging the information.
Correct.
It's going to the Registry of Deeds, and he can appeal it.
Well, it's not going to the Registry Deals, Registry of Deeds until after the appeal window has closed.
Okay.
So at this point, I can advise Mr. Rosborough that if you would like to appeal your decision, he has to do through, do so through the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
By also appealing the, it puts a red flag up to the applicant that says, hey, something's wrong.
Correct.
That she has to prove that she's correct.
Which she was potentially doing the survey anyway, but she is going to...
Now she has to have it done, if she's going to prove that she's correct, that this lot is a vacant lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
All that was clear.
Review actual items for next meeting? We have the budget in the lab, but what else we got?
Budget, budget, budget.
Yep.
What do we have to do with the Berry Road?
Yeah, we're going to do, what do we have to do with that?
I mean, he gave his information. We gotta either do something, or, I don't know.
I think we need an update from our enforcement officer on what has transpired since this original correspondence.
Could you get us a copy of the?
Planning board decision?
Not the planning board decision, the Upton and Half Field portion that he referenced in.
That was in the first document. It was sent.
No. Oh, that one? Okay. I remember that, that was a very long email.
Yeah.
I mean, from the zoning, the planning board should actually consider too, and this is that, the way Dirk described this place with thirteen rooms.
Thirteen bedrooms.
Thirteen bedrooms, but are those, you know, like he calls it a boarding house. And these people are renting out rooms, bedrooms, not, so that's on an apartment. Apartment would consist mostly of a bedroom, maybe, a own private bathroom, and a kitchen area of some kind.
Yeah.
Right, that's, so what is the technical term of an apartment? You know, because if he's renting out rooms, that's a whole, I don't know if we even have anything in it, or is only, or it's about room renting towards, I mean, it's like a hotel.
And then to the other part, does paving, is that considered expansion?
For what he wants to do, I would consider that an expansion. I mean, it's pretty...
Right, I didn't know if it was the same footprint, but being reorganized with better paving, but then, those are questions I would have.
I think you should have a site plan review. I think that's, I don't know why he's hesitating.
Because I bet there's going to be things that are going to come up that doesn't want to come up.
Well.
He's a new owner, so he might not be aware.
That's what, that's what happens with site plan reviews.
Right. So, but wholly.
Does that come from us?
Well, the site plan review is going to go up on the planning board.
Four apartments and thirteen bedrooms. I don't even know how I feel about that.
It's not four and, it's, instead of four apartments, it's thirteen bedrooms.
But there's four apartments and thirteen bedrooms within those four apartments.
Yes.
You know, but this particular lot is, there isn't another one like, there's no other one like it in town. So, I mean, you can't go back and say, well, we did it over here, or Mr. Jones, or Mr., which, you know, something else. There, there is no place like this in town, so.
But with the small, the new construction, like right after the school, right after the power lines, that's a small five unit, right?
Yeah, but they have, again, for each unit, you've got to keep so many acres of land for the units.
Okay.
So you can put the five in, if you had eleven acres of land, you can do five, you can do that.
Okay.
But he has four point six acres and six, so he's way even over what it's supposed to be. But now, was that before, was that place done for zoning? I don't know, I don't, been there as long as I know, but...
So is there anything we need to do with this?
So who's it go to now?
Well, I mean, I guess after talking to Dale, Dale's going to, should be requesting that if he wants to do whatever he does, request a variance, and then that'll trigger the planning board.
Okay.
Because the planning board said in one of these that they are not an enforcement.
Excuse me, a lot of variants, but, ah, wrong term, don't get that wrong.
Yeah.
But that's going to trigger, have to come in front of the board.
They were just saying they're not the enforcement, so technically they would kick back and forth between...
They're not the enforcement, but they're, if...
The approval.
This is what we're going to say, if you want this, you need X amount done in order to get this.
Yeah.
That says you can't go and do whatever you want, that says this is what the rules are. Now, if you don't do the rules, then there's fines and violations, obviously that go along with that.
Right.
But that might prohibit him because of what Dirk was mentioning, the hundred, a hundred-foot setbacks.
Got you.
But then he could actually go to zoning to see if he needs relief from that, that area, you know? It triggers a lot of, the site plan review will trigger a lot of whether he has to go on zoning, whether he has to do this and this and...
Okay.
Okay. Wait to hear from Dale.
I have him on my list to get an update from him.
Would it be easier to have him come before the board, at least we have a series of questions?
Again, we're...
No?
As, if we're still talking about that, as it says in here, you know, Ed, Mr. Villa, whatever he wants to say on the planning board, you know, we're enforcing a code. We're not dictating policy of the planning board.
Right.
All right, so there's a difference there. We're not here to tell the planning board what the planning, that's what they do. You know, we're here to say that the guy did not follow planning board, he went against what the planning board told him he couldn't do. Then it becomes a code enforcement, which means we have to step in and say, you're breaking the town law. This is what the repercussions of breaking town laws.
Okay. All right. Any others? A few, because we're going to full plate next meeting.
Full plate for them.
Yeah.
Your next meeting is only for budget review and to review the facilities committee report, because it's a special meeting.
Yep. All right.
October 30th. Six thirty.
Okay. Now come to the part of the meeting where we'll, those who have public comments, before we go into non-public.
Can I bring up one other thing?
Sure.
Brought to my attention that a few people have requested a bonfire beginning of the year. Trying to bring that in front of the board to see if they were all right to have a bonfire down at the sand pit, pending.
Same as last year, same idea?
Kind of, yes.
I thought that was a very nice event to bring the community together. I'd like to see that as a tradition if possible.
Will we be collecting Christmas trees again?
Or pallets?
I don't think we need to do that, but...
What are we going to do for the wood?
We'll burn some pallets or...
People are getting rid of their trees, because you can't feed them to the...
We can do that if they want to bring them down, but...
I have, I don't care, that's, that's the least of our...
Least of our issues.
Right. I'm just looking for approval of it.
Well, what does the rest of the board think?
I'm all for it. Do we have to, you know, once you get a date, and then bring it forth, and then we'll...
Yeah.
We can approve a date?
Sure.
Well, there you go. Now, I'll open it up to public comments. If anybody would like to come up to the, to Mike, you just remember to state your full name and address, and you'll be given three minutes to speak. Nobody? Okay. We have some non-public...
What are they under?
Say again?
I have several.
Several, okay, so...
A, B, and M.
What's that?
A, B, and M. RSA 91A32A for personnel, B for hiring, and M to review non-public meeting minutes.
All right, I make a motion to move into non-public per RSA 91 dash A colon 32A, B, and M.
I second.
Okay, motion made by Matt Sherland, seconded by Tim DeBrio. Roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Ben Barlet.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Matt Sherland.
Thank you, Nottingham. Have a good night.